Wait, Dennis comes in, are we supposed to like stand up and clap and stuff? Shouldn't we like do something?
Yeah.
There's gonna be a little ceremony.
That, I think you're, you're a great, you know cheerleader.
I think we should when he comes in, okay? Well, I don't have anything on either.
He's gonna turn every shade of red.
I just like to look.
Maroon. Cherry. I'm trying to think of all the shades of red.
I think it's a good, it was a good choice.
I agree. Whoops, yeah, don't you dare. Well, that's your court. Go ahead and do it. I thought it was mine. I just discovered my phone is my.
There again.
Yep, not my, it's my, I have to do it twice. I charge it in the morning and charge it afternoon and night.
Me too.
This is what's coming on. We missed you guys. Adam, we missed you. Well, we almost canceled when you got, we didn't show up. Well, you know, if they don't show up for a second, we're gonna start with somebody else.
So what is everyone wearing for the Halloween costume party?
What I have on now.
And what are you dressing as?
A select board member. I heard that back there. That's why you're in the back there, right, Gary?
That's a peanut gourds, yeah.
You don't think that'd be a good costume?
Well, I mean, I mean, it might kind of lack originality, but you know.
I always think it was pretty original. How many times have you seen somebody dressed up like a select board member, huh?
Let me give it this way, it's reusable.
And I got the socks for today.
Oh, good socks. I like the socks.
Also with the owl.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah.
Oh, cute.
Okay, that'll work. As, as long as you roll up your jeans.
I will, I will. Saturday.
Oh, boy. That's a big deal. We're having a dance again. Oh, God. I hope no one has COVID.
Oh, God.
There he is! What is he doing here?
Well, I decided that it was a good occasion to test my.
Anybody? Look at all the people here. No.
Maybe get you a motorcycle.
Oh, yeah, something safe.
I, I, when I rebuilt my house about fifteen years ago, I should have put an elevator or stairway.
Yeah.
But getting upstairs is an all-day activity.
Yeah, definitely. Almost three twelve in the night there.
Especially with that party session.
Wow, you guys got quiet.
No.
We're waiting for seven o'clock because I start at seven.
Oh.
But we've already been recording, so all the, the things that you all have been saying.
Oh, no.
Recorded for posterity.
You didn't tell us that.
Austerity, not the question.
Let me just get a, this may not be the only picture, but let me at least take a picture of all of you smiling faces.
Everyone's waiting.
Hi. I love that. All right, it is seven o'clock, and so we will begin our board meeting.
Yeah, start then.
It's been recording. I'm, I'm good. All right. And I'd like to start by doing a presentation and, and actually, I'm honored to be given the honor, the opportunity, you're in my way, to present the Spirit of America Award for Westport Island to Dennis Dunbar. For as long as I've known Dennis, he's always been somebody there who's been very professional, full of knowledge, and also speaking from the heart. And it's actually was surprising when I talked to him and I found out that he hadn't even been here as long as I have. I thought, he's been here for a hundred years. And one of the things I, I wanted to say about him is that, you know, we'd have town meetings and he'd do these beautiful presentations, very knowledgeable, very professional. He's also got this engineering mind, but what was very, always very nice of you is you always took our questions for us laypeople and re-explained things in plain English for us. So I appreciate that. And, you know, I've been on several committees with you now, and I appreciate the fact that you come down to, to our level. So, and I also want to say, in just the, the time that I've been here on this board, in less than a year and a half, Dennis, with help of people like Dick, have brought in close to a hundred thousand dollars just in, in the year and a half to this town for grants, just this little bit of time. So he's not only given his time and energy, but also given us opportunities to have lots of money. So, thank you, Dennis. So with that, I'm going to read a resolution for you.
Can you stand up, I'd like?
I could.
I think you should knight him.
Would you like to stand up? So we know who we're talking about. All right. This is from the Select Board, Resolution Number One, two thousand, twenty twenty-three. A resolution providing for recognition of Dennis Dunbar as the recipient of the 2023 Westport Island Maine Spirit of America Foundation Tribute for Exemplary Community Service. That was a mouthful. You're right, that's just the first sentence. Yeah. Yes, I have a little bit more to do. Be it resolved by the Select Board of the Town of Westport Island as follows. Whereas since moving to Westport Island, Dennis Dunmar, bar has provided outstanding service to our community by actively participating in committees. Examples of his participation include, wrote a warrant article to establish a town budget committee, then chaired it from two thousand and seven to two thousand and twelve. Those of you that were around remember that, remember that. Served on the original groundwater protection committee, which operated from two thousand and eight to two thousand and thirteen. And this is interesting because, you know, we're, we're coming back now to groundwater issues again. So I think it's never left you, and that's what I mean about being from the heart here, and what's really important to you. Served on a reorganization planning committee from two thousand and seven to two thousand and eight to restructure our schools. And for those of you who may not have been here, at that time, the governor had said that we have too many school systems, we need to sort of collapse them. And so it was a matter of trying to figure out, how do we, where do we go as a town? Who do we connect with? And part of his work as part of a team was to find out, you know, how we should be organized. And that's actually how RSU twelve came up. So he was on that committee as well. Served on the comprehensive planning, uh, plan, the comprehensive plan committee, spit that out, Donna, from two thousand and seven to two thousand and eight. Nope, starting, sorry about that, two thousand and eighteen to December two thousand and nineteen. And he was a primary author of the Natural Resources, Recreation, and Parts of the Transportation Chapters. So three chapters out of that really comprehensive set of materials. Served on Westport Island Conservation Commission since two thousand and four and helped to re-initiate the island cleanup, clout point expansion, and upgrade. And it was almost defunct for a while there, the Conservation Commission, and he helped put up things like the kiosks that we have, new signage, memorial benches, and a new footbridge. So if you haven't been over there, make sure you take a look at that. I'm still not through. And serves on a history committee and is a trustee of the Friends of Westport Island History. Whereas, this is from the Select Board, so you know there's lots of whereas. Whereas Dennis was instrumental in writing several grants that brought funding to the town of Westport Island. Examples of his grants include, wrote a grant to make clout point handicapped accessible. And that was actually one of the first time we've set money aside for land for Westport, land for names future, which is part of, we, we still have that set aside. Co-wrote a Conservation Commission Grant in two thousand and twenty-two with Dick Tucker and Carol White for Planning for Groundwater During Climate Change on Westport Island. That's the title of it. Wrote a Conservation Commission Grant in two thousand and twenty-three with Wright Pierce for Sea Level Rise Risk and Adaptation for Westport Island Roads, Bridges, Title Inlets, and Homes. The title took two lines. And that one just came out, and that was for fifty thousand dollars. Yep. Wrote a grant in two thousand and twenty and won an award for bicentennial project to create a permanent townwide history trail with eleven interpretive displays. So when you see those displays, like down at the town hall, the one at the ferry landing, all those were thanks to Dennis. Whereas Dennis, through his volunteer efforts, has devoted many, many hours to provide resources for the townspeople. Examples include, co-wrote with Dick Tucker in two thousand and fifteen, twenty sixteen, the Westport Island Stewardship Guide, a joint project with towns in our region which was mailed to all residents. Served as project lead on several Kenneback Estuary Land Trust, better known as KELT, initiatives on Westport Island, including the Seagerstrom property and several preserves. And those include more land for Bunyan Preserve, which also was, I think, doubled. The Meadow Pond Preserve, the Yankee Bog, and the Beaver Pond Preserve. Be it resolved by the Select Board of the Town of Westport Island that Dennis Dunbar is hereby recognized as the 2023 Select Island, Westport Island Spirit of America Foundation Tribute for his achievements in recent years in improving the quality of life on our community. Sponsored by the Westport Island Select Board, dated October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Well, all I can say is, I've lived in a lot of communities. And I have never lived in a community where there have been so many opportunities for regular citizens like me and like all of us to be able to contribute and make a contribution to the town that, for the town. I think it helps its vibrancy and its enjoyment to live in. For me as a volunteer, it's very enriching. And I gotta say, as an old retiree, I'm convinced that it helps keep you lively and vital. Everybody in this room deserves the recognition that you're so honoring me with, you're all doing so much volunteering all through your, your lives here. And I just so appreciate the, the recognition and the honor. Thank you.
All right, we need pictures.
Yep.
Photo on, photo on.
We, we get to have a picture now. I'm sorry, because it's sort of a consequence.
Beautiful.
All right.
Got it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And you're gonna get the resolution as well. Should we put that in a little frame for me? I'll frame it for you.
The sinister nature.
Dennis, a note here from Gabe. Dennis, there's a note here from Gabe saying, go Dennis, you have been a blessing to this island. Thank you for all your work, Gabe. All right, we have three participants on here. I don't know who's in the middle. And who's the second? Okay, all right. Thank you, guys. All right, onward to warrants. I'd like to make a, a motion that we accept payroll number forty-one for seven thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. Do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And the reason that was heftier this month, this week, is because it includes thirteen on Westport Island Volunteer Fire Department stipends. I'd like to make a, a motion that we approve accounts payable number forty-two for sixteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'd like to move to approve the minutes for October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three Select Board Meeting. Do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. And we'll sign that quickly. And we'll be legal. All right. I got nervous when I saw so many people out there and was wondering, because the next item on our agenda is citizens issues, so. Any of you have citizens issues that you'd like to talk about?
I have a citizen's question.
All right.
And maybe this is a good night for it, because it concerns a KELT property on East Shore.
Talk up just a little bit so everybody can hear you.
Long you can hear me, boy.
Go, Gary.
There's a, a road that goes up in there now, right away to Dean, Dean Grant's property. And they named it Cold Schoolhouse Road or something, a lane. Someone stole the sign. So there's no sign there now.
I think the, the, they don't want the sign, and they don't want the road, the grants. And, and KELT doesn't, doesn't want it. I understand it. So, so that there, there is no more Schoolhouse Road.
How does nine-one-one find Dean's home?
Well, the, the, the opportunity is for them to simply put an, an east shore room, street sign number on, on a tree at that driveway, that driveway that's there now. Both KELT and the grants felt like having a named street there would attract people to want to drive down and see what's down there. And the grants don't want that, and the land trust doesn't want that either, because it might endanger any hikers, walkers. So I think both parties feel it's better to not have a named street there, because it will be, let's say, a constructive nuisance. And instead, just add an east shore road address. So the E nine-one-one officer might need to address that, that issue.
Now, what about driving in that road? That is a, it's a deed to driveway, isn't it?
It's a deed to driveway, just for grants. Yeah.
Well, when I go in to check his stuff, I, I drive in there all the time. Am I not supposed to?
Well, if you've got his permission, it wouldn't absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Certainly. Yeah, we wouldn't have any objection to that right of way being used for, for any, any legal purpose that the homeowner would want.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, another question is hunting on KELT property. You just call and get a, a, like a permit?
Now, hunting is allowed on, on all the KELT properties. But we do like to have you call the office and let them know that you're gonna be in there just in case. There's gonna be multiple hunters. They might want to know that there's other hunters in there.
On that subject of question, so a hunter goes hunting on, on KELT property, they shoot a deer, who do they give the venomous to? Does it go to the KELT office, or?
I, I hope they drag it out of there and eat it.
Well, I don't know. It's just, it's nice, hunters do tend to, to thank the landowner by giving a portion, you know, a few cuts. And, and KELT could do pretty, you could give it to the poor.
We certainly could. I, we'd appreciate it, but not required.
All right, any other citizen issues? There was one that came to, to me the other day, and I just want to say again publicly that if you have an issue with a loose dog or anything else, the Select Board does not have the responsibility for that, and we don't have a dog officer here or, or an animal control officer that has to go to the, the Lincoln County Animal Control Officer. We're part of that group. So if there's an issue, we encourage you to contact them. So I just want to put that back out there again. Uh, yes, ma'am?
So I have an issue, but it's about roads. Are we gonna wait for roads or?
Okay, so why don't you hold off, and then the next issue is roads?
So before we get to roads, and you know, I'll share with you gentlemen, I called KELT for, for hunting permission, because that's what they asked us to do. And they sent me an email that said blah, 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 so that I can have that as my permission. If you're supposed to have your permission with you if you're on somebody else's land. They responded with an email that said, here, you got, you got permission.
Okay.
Care about that or not? Now, I can go roads.
Is that me? You're not, you're not gonna hunt by woodlot?
Um, I haven't gotten to you yet.
You still got a lot of deer. I saw a small buck this morning in my front yard.
Wow.
Did you bring your little pieces of paper with you?
I did not.
All right, Kim.
I'd like a nice slice of prime rib.
But plus, I did get someone from last year dropped some, some frozen cuts of roast, some sausages. And so that was on my mind. I'm very appreciative.
That reminds me, we have actually frozen moose in the freezer. Yes, our assessor got a moose, and so he brought us all moose meat. And I just remembered, it's still in the freezer. Okay. Um, yes, ma'am, Kim?
So my question is, back at the June meeting, we talked about grading ditching culverts. And I'm selfish, I live on Bay Shore Road, so I'm here specifically about Bay Shore Road. Probably there's other roads too, but haven't seen the culverts go in, the ditches are full, they're still overflowing. Every time it rains, the road comes down my driveway and fills up my own drainage ditches that I have to clean out and pipes. So I'm just here to see if there's an update on timing of cleaning out ditches and installing culverts.
And Kim, any other night, every single Monday night, Jim Cromwell is here. Tonight, he's not. And he's really the one that can best answer that. I, I know he's well aware of the issues on Bay Shore. That's one of his favorite places to talk about. So I know, I know you're on his list, but I, I don't want to speak for him. So we'll document that, and I'm sure he'll be here next week.
I know that on Bay Shore, on Sorbo Road, they have installed several new culverts. And in the ditch along the side of the road, they built little catch stands made with rock.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, it's, obviously, it's a step in the right direction. It's, you know, one of the problems we have with, with Sorbo is that when the water is like this on one side, like this on the other, and it constantly desaturates the roads, which makes it become a quagmire in the spring. Well, hopefully, if the, the culverts work, and it can drain the subgrade a little bit prior to the freeze-up, it won't be so bad in the spring.
Yeah. Kim, I think that pretty much a lot of the roads had been taken care of, and I think your road was one of the last ones that was on the, the list.
Well, we, we actually put out an RFP in, in September to, to do the, uh, the culverts on the Bay Shore Road and the ditching and so forth. We got it back, and it was more than we wanted to, to pay. But we decided at that time, with Jim's recommendation, was to not do the whole job, pulled off some of that till, till next year, but, but to have him do the, the essential. And that was the word we used, was the essential work on Bay Shore, including where necessary placing culvert to, so that people would have a safe road for the winter. But he had a lot of things he wanted to do, and, and we've had to postpone that.
Right, well, we've had a, we've had a difficult season because it's been so much rain.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, this is the first week that he isn't here, so, yeah.
So one of, one of the reasons that came up for me, it was I was out raking leaves. And I usually keep the ditch in front of our property clear, which is a little work when you're old, right? But, um, so I didn't want to go do all that work. He was coming tomorrow. So that was one thing. And I understand ours is not the priority, where we live is not the worst part of the world by any stretch.
Right, right.
And I'm not really interested in raking the entire, the ditch out. So I'll just do my little piece and, oh, good.
I believe if you had to take one piece of that that was priority, would probably be where the extras are, extras are. Yeah. I know he's talked a lot about that, yeah, particular. So if he was only allowed to put in one culvert, it would probably be around there.
I think that's exactly where my work car sat overnight last spring.
Well, hopefully, it won't have to next spring.
I got a big car.
Any, any other issues around roads or anything else? Nope. Okay. Um, we're gonna go on to correspondence, and Gabe, you're on here, and I just want to say that we received your, your information, but we really didn't have a chance to look at it, so we'd like to postpone any conversation about the, the filing with, co-file with the copying of microfiche and whatnot. We'd like to save that for next week. So I'm just acknowledging that we saw it, but it wasn't till, thank you, it wasn't till the last minute. So, all right, on to admin items. This could be an early night. This would be great. One question that we had, Jeff, you had a question about heat oil for the town, and I don't know, April, do you know anything about heating oil?
I think this is more a question for, for Ashley. We, someone brought up, and I don't, I think it was someone in the town brought up, do we have a heating oil contract? Has the town, has the town competed or somehow gotten an, an arrangement with a heating oil vendor to get a discount? And I had to say, not that I know. So it's actually back to, I actually don't know in our files if we had a contract in the past. But if not, then that is something we, we should, should be investigating. Nothing else, just to make sure that we have it set up so that we, we don't have a, a, a high, a break in deliveries of heating oil. And that's for the Wright Landing House, for the town hall, and for the town office. I think actually it may have been Spacy. The fire station was asking about it, because the fire station would also be able to participate in that, but they pay for that themselves.
I can ask Ashley tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, do you have anything for admin items?
Could, could you talk about this? You've been doing a lot of work on the website and with a group of people. Is there anything you could give us as a, kind of an update of where you think we are?
Yeah, so we're looking to transition to a new website. The one we currently have, we don't have tech support for anymore, and it's a kind of uncommon platform. So we've been looking into the more mainstream platforms, things like Wix, and I'm trying to think of a major one right now and spacing.
It's Catalyst or Town Web?
Well, yes, there's those WordPress. Yes, but, and then there's these other specialized companies that make websites just for municipal government that are all fancier, a little pricier. A lot of towns around here use any one of the three major ones. So we've been doing demos with those folks, looking into that, doing research with other independent WordPress developer types and gathering prices and trying to figure out exactly what we need and how much it should cost. And it's, I've learned a lot. It's been a journey. I think we're closing in on it, and we're gonna do a little more research this week and get some more feedback on the specific things that they have that we really would like to have for the town, such as the little forms for all the town forums, having to come get a paper one or download a PDF. Maybe at some point, payment portals, you can pay town fees right through the website instead of having to come in here, those kind of things. instead of having to come in here, those kinds of things. So we're hoping to present a spectrum of possibilities to the Select Board and have a decision on that probably by early November so we can get cracking on it. Have a website soon.
All right. Any other, any other admin items? Anything from you or Neil?
A couple of things, I think, just to continue some of the things, this is more work, kind of work in progress that we're now planning the, the revaluation work. So this will be, it's a, it's a major step for the town to revalue the properties. And again, we're supposed to do every 10 years. We're due to have it done for 2025. So we're now, we've been trying to do some, some research on what was done in the past. We found some of the records from 2014. But now to explore the vendors that are out there, the services they offer. So that's in progress. And we'd like to be able to put this out to bid this fall. But we're scrambling, so we're still working on that. But when something, when we get there, we'll, we'll bring it, bring it forward. But just to say, and just in the, if anyone has any experience, interest, comments, we'd be glad to. We've been reaching out for others who could give us some advice and mentoring and people who have had experience. The town treasurer, Ashley Murray, had reached out through the treasures and tax collectors list to see what recommendations other, other town treasurers had. So she's gotten some input back there.
And it wouldn't be that we would be using the same person that we use now, the same assessor. We want to have somebody different to give just a really big picture, assessing all properties again. So I see lots of eyes looking sort of glazed over with that. There'll be more information coming later. That was just to let you know some of the discussions that we're having. All right. We're going to go on to other legal business and we only have a quick update. Anybody that was here in the past or I know you all are always listening to our, our presentations in your leisure, at your leisure. But we did have a visit, we went on a visit to an issue that had come up, a complaint that we had about one of the residents having a junkyard. So you'll be hearing more about that as we get more involved with this. But it was presented last week as an issue and we just wanted to acknowledge that we did follow up and we will be doing more work with that. We'll be working with Gary, our code enforcement officer, to figure out how to move forward with that. So that's it on the, on the legal business. We, I don't believe have anything signed yet from, from Longevarty issue. We did give it to the, to their lawyer and as soon as we get that signed, we'll be totally done with that. But he, he got it last Monday or whenever, the, the next day after.
Yeah, did they need the original? I, I scanned it in, I emailed it. I thought maybe they'd stopped in to sign the original or they would sign the one I?
He may, he may have given it to our lawyer, I don't know.
I could send the original? I'm not sure, I just realized.
Since they're here, should be able to come in and sign if, if necessary. Because I believe that Dr. Longevarty works out of town. But maybe we can make arrangements to have, so he can come in on the weekend.
I can, I can follow up and contact their lawyer again. I can do that tomorrow.
Because it'll need to be notarized too, which we can do here.
Because that's been over a week now. With that, unless either of you two have any other issues, we're going to call it a night. So I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second?
For a minute, I wasn't going to get one.
I was being polite.
And I would get nervous. All right. I think we'll take that as an adjournment. Yes. All in favor? It's Monday, what can I say? Gabe, we'll talk later.
Gabe did weigh in to say that we had to contract up for the oil dealer in the past. So I think we just need to check in the files. Well, just see what it says. I don't know if we got a discount.